...the sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P. M. If you would please silence your cell phones and any other electronic devices, and if you're participating on the conference call, if you could please mute your phones, we would greatly appreciate it. If you all would please stand for the prayer by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and also our pledge of allegiance by Councilman Gilat.
Father God, before you see me, we give you honor. Father, we thank you for this new year, God, the blessings that it brings. Father, we thank you that your mercies are renewed every day, Lord. We ask for guidance tonight as we do city business here and make decisions that affect the city, God. Most of all, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, for his sacrifice for our sins. In his name we praise him. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat, and thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Also, when I thank Mr. Ankerson tonight is his young youthful birthday, and he's here on this during this cold wintry storm we're having dedicated to the city of Gochae and have to travel home in deteriorating weather conditions. So, we thank you for your service to Gochae and wish you many more happy birthdays. Do we have any changes to our agenda, Ms. Mr. Ankerson or Ms. Shantsey?
Yes, Mayor. This is agenda item number two. It's been corrected to bring twenty thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. There are two corrections. There's a correction on the consent agenda for the minutes. There are two of them. One is page one of the December 18th minute, one is page 28 of the January 2nd minute. And also, we have added consent agenda items number six and seven in relation to the Gochae Mardi Gras parade.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with changes?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No.
Councilman Don?
No.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Mr. Ankerson, our planning director.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have the updated copy of the announcements.
Okay.
Did they just add one?
I don't think. No, they're on there. I'll make them. The announcement is the city of Gochae's Mardi Gras and Tailgate Party will be on February the third from two P. M. till nine P. M. at the former Singan River Mall property. And the Gochae Mardi Gras Parade hosted by the Gochae Men's Club will be on February the third at seven P. M., and fireworks will follow. So, come join us for our Mardi Gras festivities in the city of Gochae. We do not have a presentation agenda this evening. That brings us to our business agenda. Business agenda item number one is creation, reclassification, and elimination of specified positions and approval of the revised schedule of authorized positions by Ms. Shantsey.
Yes, Mayor. Some of these are just housekeeping items, but there is what we are adding an additional meter reader, which does affect the budget, but we do need an additional meter reader, and our city clerk and comptroller has approved it, and she worked this up for us.
Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council to approve the creation, reclassification, elimination of specified positions and approval of the revised schedule of authorized positions?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman George?
No discussion.
All in favor? We had a motion by Councilman College, a second by Gilat. All motion carries.
Aye.
Oh.
Aye.
He said aye, didn't he? Oh, Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Okay. I thought I asked him. Thank you for the reminder. That brings us to approval, business agenda item number two, approval of the emergency repair of the Old Spanish Trail manhole as invoiced by Bottom Two Top Construction by our city clerk, Ms. Teresa Montgomery.
Per state purchasing guidelines, any emergency purchase that is done without two flights has to be spread upon the minute and approved prior to payment. This is for the collapsing manhole in Old Spanish Trail in Dawson. It was affecting the roadway prior to the holidays, and we deemed it an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? Do we have a motion by council to approve the emergency repair of the Old Spanish Trail and Dolphin Road manhole as invoiced by Bottom Two Top Construction?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
I'm glad they were able to get it repaired quickly. I've got my, it was a deep one, twelve to sixteen foot deep, so.
Yeah.
No other comments.
Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
Anybody rode by there during that time, he would have found out that was a big job. They did a great service to us. That's it.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just want to thank H. Two-O and Bottom Two Top Construction for your fast, timely repair, and luckily, we didn't have anybody injured or a car in the middle of the collapse line. So, we thank the good Lord above.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, second by Councilman College. All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow a packaged liquor store in a C-two community commercial zoning district by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department received a request from Genoa Nick Corretts, doing business on Core One in Spirits, for a conditional use major that would allow a packaged liquor store in a C-two community commercial zoning district at thirty-eight A. Gochae Van Cleve Road, Suite Nine. Parcel ID number is eight-two-four-three-five-zero-one-zero dot zero-five-zero. Application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars is paid on November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and all public notice requirements have been met for this case. A little, some background for the property, the general features. It's about one point eight-seven acres. The existing land use now is commercial, retail, and the comprehensive plan's future land use designation is low-impact commercial. I've included the review criteria for your reviews in section four-seventeen filed with the E. V. O. along with the staff's answers and the applicant's responses to those. And upon hearing this case, the planning commission recommends the city council approve the request as presented due to the fact that there are, there are other areas that have liquor stores by neighborhoods. The city council may approve the conditional use major, approve the conditional, conditional use major changes, or deny the conditional use major. I've included the X. R. for your view along with full pack maps and also the F. U. Z. Y. and.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number three? If you did, come to the podiums, take your first and last name and address.
My name is Charles Moore.
Mr. Moore, your address.
I'm in West Gate, part of Gochae, Mississippi. Don't you think we've got enough liquor stores here in Gochae? We got one, two, or two, one down, one up, here, on Gochae's back, near the road already.
Hi. Mr. Moore, I guess people want to buy liquor.
I mean.
You can get one online, my lady.
Any other citizen comments? Do we have a motion by council to accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve a conditional use major permit that would allow a packaged liquor store in a C-two community commercial zoning district located at three-eight-eight-zero Gochae Van Cleve Road, Suite Number Nine, GPC number twenty-four dash zero-two dash C.U., parcel identification number eight-one-eight-zero-four-zero-eight-five dot zero-five-zero?
I make a motion we approve the planning commission's recommendation.
Got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
Yeah, the funny thing is, people drink when they're happy, people drink when they're sad. Evidently, it's a ruin business, but I mean, if somebody's willing to take a chance and invest in our community, we get the sales tags off it. Who are we to deny?
I understand that, but y'all can manage the police. Really. Well.
But actually, I mean, I really appreciate the diversification that Baywood Commons is having now. I mean, between Nell's Line, you got a tattoo, got a coffee shop, go have a liquor store there. I mean, it's a one-stop shop just about. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gilat?
Wasn't there a liquor store in there before?
Many years ago.
Many years ago, I thought. People drink when it's cold, too. That's all I got.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, it was one by the church on, if I can remember. That church, it was right one beside it. But I understand, you know, whoever's gonna drink, they're gonna drink regardless whether it's a liquor store there or not, they're gonna, so it's not gonna stop them from drinking. If they, if we was a dry county, they'd go across the borders just to get the, get the liquor, bring it back over. So, you know, we just, we battling the uphill battle there, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
No discussion.
Thank you. I just, you know, I understand, Mr. Moore, your concern, just sort of like gas stations, you know, I understand that. So, but I do want to thank, you know, the shopping center owners at Baywood Commons, they've done a great job, they're refaciting there, and they continue to strive to have diversity in their shopping center, and I think they are committed to their investment. And also, I would like to thank Mr. Corretts for, if you would like to stand up and say something, but I want you to thank you for investing in our community to help grow Gochae together.
Thank you for having me. God bless everyone, peace, peace and blessings upon everyone. I come here to do no harm to your beautiful state of neighborhood. I'm a refugee from New York, and did fifteen years in the New York City Department of Correction, and I'm a retired boarder. So, I understand that there's a school nearby, a college. There will absolutely be no tampering with IDs. I'm gonna get the state-of-the-art fake ID technology recognition for my fellows at M. Y. P. D. and N. Y. C. D. with absolutely no problem on discount. There will be no hooliganism, or obstruction of traffic, or loud noise, or fighting, or any sort of police contact around my liquor store. And I'm just very grateful for you for the opportunity to be heard, to be given the opportunity to make money in the city of Gochae, and I just want to make money and pay my taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts, for investing in Gochae. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our business agenda number four, consideration of a special exception that would allow occupancy of an existing single-family dwelling in a C-two community commercial zoning district, GPC number twenty-four dash zero-three S.C. by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from Thomas Dunblay. This is for a special exception that would allow occupancy of an existing single-family dwelling in a C-two community commercial zoning district. Application fee of two hundred and fifty dollars is paid on December eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, and all public notice requirements have been met. Some general features of the, it has, this property has an existing home, approximately a thousand square feet, lot size is one point seven-five acres. There is potable water and wastewater services available. Surrounding zoning is C-two community commercial, R-one low-density, single-family residential. The current surrounding existing land use is low-density residential. There's some vacant property in the area, and there's some commercial detail in the area. The comprehensive plan's future designation for this property is low-density residential. Upon hearing this case, the planning commission recommends the city council approve the special exception due to the existing characteristics of the neighborhood. City council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception with changes or deny the special exception. Again, you have, you have the application and the minutes from the planning commission meeting that you reviewed, and the applicant is.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number four? Do we have a motion by council to approve a special exception that would allow, accept the planning commission's recommendation to approve a special exception that would allow occupancy of an existing single-family dwelling in a C-two community commercial zoning district located at seven-six-zero-nine Martin Bluff Road, PID number eight-five-seven-zero-zero-zero-eight-nine dot zero-zero-zero, GPC number twenty-four dash zero-three dash S.C.?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
Sir, how long has it been vacant now?
I believe about a year and a half, maybe. I received it here about a year ago. I received it here about a year ago, and I think it was vacant for about four or five months prior to this. I was under the impression when I purchased it.
Mr. Dunaway, can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. T.J. Dunaway. I live at four-four-four-seven Jeremiah Coe, Deodraville, Mississippi. I bought it about a year and a half ago, a year ago from my cup. And I was under the impression that it was residential, and I went and checked its water turn on. They informed me it was not, and.
Yeah, I remember someone was living in it for a while, and it was vacant.
People were still living in it.
You had some squatters in there?
Yes, I do.
That's that one by the Dollar General, the little one. They've done a lot of improvements. It's now a tan color, I think it is, or?
I'm sorry?
What colors, what colors it is?
It's still yellow. I haven't done anything. Went in there, got all the stuff in there, but I haven't done anything because I don't want to put money into something that I can't do nothing with.
Waiting on up, sir.
Sir?
You waiting on up, sir?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am, yes, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, this is directly across the street from my in-laws, and I'm just concerned that it's gonna be kept in good condition. Can you approve that?
I'm sorry?
He's just wanting to make sure you're gonna keep it maintained up to the city ordinance.
Yes, sir.
He said, "Yes, sir," Councilman Anderson.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got.
You're welcome. Councilman College?
This is one of those head-scratches of why that was owned on C-two when, you know, that far north. I know it's right across from the Dollar General, well, Catacoria and so forth, but I mean, yeah, that house has been there as long as I've lived here. Everything, I didn't realize the lot was that big. That's a, that's a good-sized lot and stuff, so that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
Thank you.
I do have one other question.
Go ahead, Councilman College.
Are we, as planning commission, I know we've had a few of these as far as commercial, going back to residential and so forth. Are we gonna look at possibly doing kind of a comprehensive rezoning in this area?
Of that entire area? If you looked at the map, you probably saw where even some of that subdivision that's been there since the sixties was rezoned into a C-two commercial, I believe it was pretty much the state in the zoning when the comprehensive plan was done. So, I'm gonna look into changing, or proposing that y'all both change that back to the R-one based on the state, and then I'm gonna go through and pick the properties that make sense to go back to the R-one, so.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Councilman College, thank you, Mr. Ankerson. I just, Mr. Dunaway, want to thank you for investing in Gochae, and that house has been empty for a very long time, as you know. And I just, it'd be great to have somebody living there and just taking pride in the community, and it's a great area to live in, Gochae. So, thank you for investing. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elvin. All in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman George?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number five, consider a request for a nine-foot variance to a side yard setback requirements in an R-one low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at six-two-five Susan Circle, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-four dash zero-four dash V.A.R. by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received this request from William and Angela Blackburn for a nine-foot variance to side yard setback requirements. The application fee of one hundred and seventy-five dollars is paid on November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and again, all public notice requirements were met. The applicant's previous single carport was destroyed by a fire. He'd like to build back with a double carport. By making the previous single carport a double, he was feet only one foot from the side property line. This is an odd-shaped property. You can view it on the maps that I provided in your packet. However, these side yard setback requirements in this district, R-one, would be ten foot, so he would need a nine-foot variance in order to accomplish this. So, upon hearing the case, the planning commission recommends the city council approve the variance request as presented. City council may approve the variance request as presented, approve the variance request with changes, or deny the variance request. Again, the applicants are here tonight. They have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number five? Do we have a motion by council to approve planning commission's recommendation for a nine-foot variance to a side yard setback requirements in an R-one low-density, single-family residential zoning district located at six-two-five Susan Circle, Gochae, Mississippi, GPC number twenty-four dash zero-four V.A.R., PID number eight-one-eight-one-seven-one-seven-five dot zero-zero-zero?
So moved on the motion.
Motion by Councilman Anderson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes, looking at this layout on this, what I got here, is it just, at just a corner, like at a forty-five degree, that's gonna be the nine-foot variance, Scott?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, and it's not a parallel line? Okay. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Councilman College?
Yeah, I understand. I mean, it looks like any of the structures are pretty far away from it. Are you planning on putting a gutter or a downspout on that side?
Yes, okay, gutter process, that's right.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was Mr. William Blackburn speaking.
Six-two-five Susan Circle.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Mr. Gilat?
I don't have any comments. Anytime. Somebody wants to improve their property, I'm all for it.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
Thank you. I just want to thank you and Ms. Blackburn for investing in Gochae, and we're blessed to have you here, and thank you for beautifying your neighborhood. We have a motion by Councilman Anderson, a second by Councilman Gilat. College, all in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman George?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number six. The staff presentation was by our city clerk and comptroller, Ms. Teresa Montgomery. They were also provided online, so that is the staff presentation. Do we have any public comments on approval of the doctative claims? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion we approve the doctative claims provided that all entries there are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
Thank you. We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elvin?
No discussion.
Councilman Anderson?
No discussion.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No comment.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman George? I'm sorry. Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda. They're all approved in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one.
I'm gonna pull, um, oh. Oh, yeah.
Which one?
Number five.
Number five?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Shantsey, do you hear they're pulling consent? And Ms. Montgomery, they're pulling consent number five?
For further discussion.
For further discussion.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, do we have a motion to approve one through four and six through seven? Consent item number one is approval of minutes from recess council meeting held December nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three with changes, and regular council meeting held January second, twenty-twenty-four with changes. Two, receive December twenty-twenty-three privilege license report. Three, authorization of the Gochae Mayor's Youth Council to travel to Starkville, Mississippi for the Mississippi Municipal League's twenty-twenty-four statewide leadership summit. Four, authorization to submit an application to Coastal Mississippi Tourism Commission and accept awarded funds. Six, resolution approving the sponsorship of Gochae Men's Club Annual Mardi Gras Parade to be held on February the third, twenty-twenty-four. Seven, resolution approving closure of roads and traffic control measures as described in the special event permit application submitted by the Gochae Men's Club for their annual Mardi Gras Parade on February the third, twenty-twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. All in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman George?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number five, approval of the agreement between the city of Gochae and American Municipal Services Corporation to provide account resolution services. Yeah, I was gonna let the staff present it. Ms. Shantsey?
That sounds good.
Teresa, I think Teresa might do a better job than being here at five.
I will. Ms. Montgomery? She's on silent. Y'all just give her a minute to unmute.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I hit the button, it didn't work.
Ah, that's okay.
This is a, this is a contract to collect old court fines. That's basically what it is. AMS is a company that Ocean Springs uses. They've had good results. Our court clerk went out, talked to them, the judges talked to them, they agreed. The judge has gone through the contract and made changes, and we're just ready to get it started. Get some money in here.
Okay. So, is this strictly for old fines, or is this for current fines as well?
It's for all fines. There will be a process with fines are admitted later, but this would, they would start off with all the old stuff. But this would, they would start off with all the old stuff.
So, they're not handling any of our current fines, am I correct?
Nothing else.
Nothing, but it's currently being collected.
Okay.
Or is it a payment plan?
Okay.
It would strictly start off with old fines.
All right. I have no, no problem.
And Ms. Montgomery, if I recall, I think we used to use this company many, many years ago, didn't we?
Um, not recently that I remember.
Yeah, okay.
I had another one, but I don't know if it was AMS.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Gochay and American Municipal Service Corporation to provide account resolution services?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman Elbin?
No discussion.
Councilman, um, Anderson?
No, no discussion.
Councilman College?
No.
Councilman Galat?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman George?
No discussion.
Thank you. I thank everybody for their hard work, because we need people paying their fines to get them off the books. But, um, we have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Councilman Anderson, I mean, Anderson, Councilman George?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our citizen comments. Um, but before we have our citizen comments, I would just like to recognize Mr. Wooton. I'm about to recognize y'all. Um, I just want to recognize the Gochay Men's Club. Um, Bob White back here is the president. Mr. David Wooton is the treasurer, and Mr. Daryl Jackson is a member, and he just left. Um, not knowing he was gonna be recognized, probably. Mr. White, would you like to, we want to thank them for one, investing in Gochay and doing community service. But would you like to say something about the upcoming parade festivities that we're partnering with you on?
Well, you know, we hope that the parade this year will be a lot greater than it's been in the past. I think the city's involvement with, uh, the fireworks and the bands before should, should add, uh, add to the excitement that night. Uh, it appears that it's working. We've got more participa- participation in it than we've had in the past. And, uh, the mayor's already offered to, uh, be one of our judges. Would anybody on the, uh, city council like to be, uh, a participant in it? Uh, we need a total of three. Uh, if you'd let the mayor know, uh, we greatly would appreciate it, and, uh, we appreciate the chance and, uh, the opportunity and all the support that the city, the city council, the mayor, and all the employees of the City of Gochay give us to be able to put this on. It's not a small event. Uh, it takes a lot of time for us to do it, and I know it takes a lot of time for the city council. Thank you.
If you want to volunteer to judge, take thirty, forty, five minutes to static judge it, uh, before the thing.
They don't know who you are.
Right, until we can walk up there and pray for, uh, the lineup and, uh, judge him based on three, four criteria. Yeah. They'll have everything you need to do that if somebody will volunteer.
Thank y'all so much. We once again appreciate y'all and your volunteers to help promote the city and that event. It's gonna be a fabulous day here in Gochay. Um, let's have a Le Bonton roulette at the old Singin' River Mall property now called Town Comedy.
Warmer than it is today.
Yes, and no run. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Okay, that brings us to citizen comments. Um, Mr. Blackburn, were you just gonna comment on your agenda item, or did you want to comment?
That was it. I was just on.
That's it? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Charles Moore?
My name is Charles Moore. I live at nineteen twenty West Gate, Gochay, Mississippi. I still ask in a restaurant to resign for the company made by African American several months ago. Um, one of the King birthday yesterday, he represented all of us that was, didn't have nothing going on. He was more for us to, even the God's people to have a raise different things he did in this, in this world. So, we, we don't need nobody that coming up here with a comment like what he said about African America. We, we make this city better too. We not trying to tear this city down. And so, he represent all of us, and I want to represent the peoples now, our young people that's coming up. We don't need no negative stuff about us and what, what, what we about. We trying to improve. I know I am. Everybody ain't, black ain't, may not feel this way. A lot of whites don't feel this way. So, we, we need to make, get this together and ask for us to go here and resign and get out of here. So, we can make this community together, and we make, and we, we trying to improve this. I know I am. So, that's what I'm about.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Ken Truitt?
My name's Ken Truitt. I live five, two zero five, Deerfield Drive, Gochay. Been in Westgate forty five years. I'm proud to say that. I always say that, okay? Uh, I'll talk, I want to talk about the good of my community, Westgate, all right? I've mentioned about three times about that ditch behind my house there. It's a major ditch that feeds, uh, to the Sioux Valley Drainage Ditch, all right? I was wondering if it's on, anyone's punch list to get cleaned out? Uh, street lights, uh, what, uh, this, in the neighborhood, it, on, on the off streets is pretty good, okay? But going down the main thoroughfare, Westgate Parkway, we got some blind spots. When you pulling out on Westgate, sometimes you taking a chance, because people might come around that curb and hit you, you know? And people walking down, uh, Westgate Parkway, we don't have, we don't have no, uh, sidewalks to walk down, okay? But if we had a light there, a driver could see someone walking in the street, he would hit them, you know? Animals get hit all the time, up and down that road, you know? But, uh, that's, that's a problem we got there. Another problem, I remember two ladies living in Westgate, they're talking about, uh, uh, the, uh, water meters, okay? The water meters over there, they talking about reading the water meters, okay? The water meters over there, some of them are, are underwater, some of them got water in them. You would have to get water out. Uh, most of them is covered with dirt, and I don't know, I don't know if the meter people read them electronically, or they come by, take, take the, uh, the hood off and read them, all right? But a lot of them don't have the caps on. Why they don't have caps? The water rises, wash the caps.
Down the street.
Down the street.
Mm-hmm.
Anywhere, okay? Now, that, that's another problem that we got. And, and, you know, I heard that we're supposed to maintain our own, uh, a meter, our own shut off area. But, uh, we could be snakes down there, spiders, all kinds of animals, you know? Uh, insects or whatever, you know, and, and you trying to dig all that out, someone can get bit, you know? And, uh, that, that was my first time hearing about, uh, we had to maintain our own, uh, shut offs. I would say how they reading meters, you know? They say some of them electronically, but I, I read, I read the thing on mine. I don't see no antenna enough. Some of them got antennas, some of them don't. As a matter of fact, meter readers have come to my area looking for my neighbor's meter, and it don't work with that. I say, hey, it's over in my yard, you know? Or they be looking for meter and can't find it. But anyway, that's all I got.
Mr. Truitt, I'm sorry, Councilman College forgot to hold up your one minute. Three minutes is up.
We're losing improvements in our area.
Okay, thank you. And I encourage, that's it, Mr. Truitt. Um, I just want to remind people that, um, reach out, I mean, to your elected officials. That's what we're here for. Um, directly, your councilman, if you don't feel like you can call your councilman of your ward, you also then get the councilman at large, Councilman College, he's readily accessible, and myself, um, will be glad to help you with these issues. The lighting issue, Ms. Shancy, I think, has instructed staff to look at some safety concerns in there. If I recall, have you, Ms. Shancy, or you were going to, um, look at that for lighting and give an estimate to see about budget, et cetera?
Uh, I don't know that Westgate was on the list, but I can put it on the list to look at it.
Okay, if we can put Westgate on that list, because there was other areas that were being looked at, so. And then also the ditch, I think that is on a list with H two O to clean the ditch. However, Mr. Truitt, we have had tons, and I repeat, tons. They worked all throughout the Christmas holiday. They had no holiday.
I just want to give us.
So, it is on the list, but unfortunately, their list keeps growing, the others keep falling, because the emergencies keep happening. Um, and they've been working morning, noon, and night, unfortunately.
But they'll catch up.
They'll catch up eventually. Um, but we thank them for their hard work over there.
And then I think we did clarify, as far as the meter maintenance, they just didn't want vehicles parked on stop, on top and all that stuff. But really, I think probably what our meter readers need to do is, uh, verify that they have the tops and they're snapped on good, and those that are missing, go ahead and get H two O to put new lids on there. That do snap in and are held in place, so they'll fall.
And then, well, Mr. Truitt, can you write them down if you know, or know anybody in your neighborhood? Tell them to call the utility department, and they'll put in a work order for them, okay? And so, we can get that addressed, because there are some manual read and there are some digital read. Okay, and that's all for citizen comments. Mr. Anderson, will you get that to the clerk tomorrow? I appreciate you. Council comments, we start with Councilman Elbin, because it's, uh, second meeting of the month.
Just want to thank our employees at the city, Public Works, provider, our, uh, public safety, and our administrative employees. Thanks for the work you do. We couldn't do it without you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Elbin. Councilman Anderson?
Uh, yes, uh, in relation to Mr. Truitt's, uh, I believe it's Mr. Truitt's question about the ditches in Westgate. Uh, we did a meeting a few of those, discussed the issues of these ditches, and, and I, and like you said, they should be on the, on the list to be cleaned, and, uh, they, they really need to be inspected and looked at and, and, uh, see what needs to be done with them and as soon as possible, because we know, no telling when flooding may start. So, uh, Mr. Truitt, I'm gonna assure you that they are gonna look at these soon, I hope, and, uh, we get that major ditch cleaned in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. And Public Works Director and H two O, and, I mean, they, I don't know if you heard us, but they noted and they have it on the list. Unfortunately, we've had many, um, major events happen that has prolonged them getting to their normal list, but they will get to it as soon as possible. Davis Sherding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman College?
Uh, everybody stay warm. Uh, we actually had a, a good trip to Jackson last week to meet with our state legislators, and, uh, very optimistic that we'll get funding for some of the projects we're hoping for. Let's keep your fingers crossed. We always welcome money.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Galat?
I'll just ask them to phone the mall. No discussion after that. I'm through.
Thank you, Councilman Galat. Councilman Jackson?
Yes, I hope everybody's New Year started out well. Um, I, we do have some projects, um, in my ward that'll be, that's, I believe, soon to be coming along. Um, in West Park, the drainage and things like that, we're working on to get the drainage improved in West Park. Working on it. It should be coming real soon, so, um, I just, you know, uh, and I don't want to just make a promise, because I know, um, things change in politics, so I, I just want to make sure, make, uh, the constituents, let the constituents know that this project is being worked on. Um, and we did have a great, um, um, visit, we're going to Jackson. That, it was great to go there to see all the, um, hopefully, all the great things take place. And, uh, I, yeah, I, I'm optimistic too, as well, and I believe we're gonna get, we're gonna keep pushing, and we're gonna get it. So, we just, as long as we keep pushing, we're gonna get the things we need for our city. So, look for great things in the city of Gochay. That's not, that's all the comments I have.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. And Councilman George?
No discussion.
I just want to say to all of the peo- ones that are sick, that you, um, get, recover well and fastly, and also remind everybody to be safe out there during this wintry. Um, weather we have that is uncommon to our areas sometimes, that you just pay attention and drive with caution if you have to be out. Please follow the guidelines of our city administration as they put out, or M dot, or the county. As you see, if you've not downloaded our city app, I encourage you to please do that, because that is how it will get pushed immediately, um, out to the residents. So, please, I thank the staff, the city manager, um, police department, fire department, Sam, all of them who has made sure to keep the citizens informed throughout the holidays and throughout the weather we've been experiencing. And I appreciate all of you and all the staff. I also want to thank the city manager. As you heard, we went to Jackson last week to the Mississippi Municipal League Conference, Legislative Conference. We had meetings with our coastal delegation while there, met with other legislatures while we were there. We thank our sponsors who sponsored events while we were there, and we just want to say we had a successful trip. In Gochay's future, I have faith. It's bright, and we have a great delegation representing Coastal Mississippi and Jackson. And I feel strong about our request that our city manager has teamed with our employees to put together for us to go request for our citizens. Also, I think we will have great, um, announcements in the coming weeks, and I invite you to stay tuned. Once again, download that app, pay attention to our social media, because Gochay is growing, and we're gonna be growing rapid, rapidly here shortly. So, I have faith and just keep staying positive. If you hear the negative, ask them to say a couple of positive things, because we do have a wonderful community here to live in. Once again, I cannot thank, um, H two O Solutions. Once again, um, I can't brag on those guys enough. For their employees to send thank you messages thanking us for hiring somebody to be a voice and give them safety and everything else y'all provided to them, I just can't say thank you. Thank y'all, and thank your upper management. With that, Mr. Anderson, will you come to the front, please? And we are gonna sing happy birthday to the happy birthday boy. So, um, we will get these candles lit.
I'm just gonna tell you, that's not enough candles.
Um, sorry, there one for every decade. I did make sure of that.
How is he?
Ramona's gonna lead us in this scene. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Scott. Happy birthday to you. And many more cha, cha, cha. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Your container for you to take at home tonight and enjoy is in your, um.
Oh, I'm not dating right now.
And also your staff, y'all have, um, in your refrigerator on your side, y'all have of our decade. Just enjoy with your employees tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That, and I hope everybody has a great week. That brings us to our city manager comments. Ms. Shancy?
That's all right. I have these things.
We hope you get well too, and if you need us, you call. That brings us to our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery?
No, sir.
Thank you, and stay safe out there. Don't cross over those river bridges. And that brings us to our city attorney, Mr. Daniels.
Happy birthday, Scott. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels, and you stay safe over there on the west side.
Yep, sir.
That brings us, we don't have anything else. Do we have a motion to adjourn until February the sixth, twenty twenty four at six thirty P M?
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Councilman Galat. Any discussion? All in favor? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman George?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're adjourned.